To the agenda, we're gonna put 5.05 right at the start of new business and that's gonna be the FCC LA presentation. All right, with that, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks. We did not have any public comments and nobody had signed up for it, so we'll move into consent agenda items. As previous meetings, I've looked for an approval for 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, and 4.7. That'll be meeting minutes from the special board meeting on August 3rd, the joint board meeting on August 3rd, the August 5th building and grounds meeting, the August 20th regular board meeting, the September 10th joint board meeting, and the September 16th athletic committee meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve 4.1 through 4.7 meeting minutes.
Motion's been made.
Sorry.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial reports?
These are all balances as of 2025. In general fund, we're at $1,740,450.60. Capital projects, $68,841.98. And I didn't open up checking, $600,490.84.
Any questions on the financial reports as presented? Entertained a motion to approve?
Move to approve the financial report.
Mickey is motion. Second by Kirk, all those in favor? Motion carries, new business 5.05 FCC LA.
I'll start and I'll let the class talk. We'd just like to thank the board and administration for their support of our FCC LA programs over the past few years. This last summer, we had 10 students earning the privilege, I guess, of competing at our national competition in Orlando, Florida. Unlike some of these organizations, ours travels. So it was Orlando this year, this last year, next year they're looking forward to a trip to Washington DC for those who finish in the top two at our state competition. Kids are working on their Starred Red stuff already. Our middle school group is getting a little bit more, it's getting larger, they're more active, they're more involved. Those younger kids love to stay busy, so we're coming up with ways to keep their little hands busy and keep them working on stuff while also keeping all their work done and passing for classes. So we've got a double, double thing there. Four of the students who competed at national are, have graduated, so I didn't ask them to come back. Parker and Noel, I believe, were nationals three times. And Trin was his first trip and Hope, I believe, was her second trip. They got all golds and silvers, so it was, that was pretty cool. But again, thank you so much for your support, for the kids being gone during the year for our state regional competitions, summers in July, so they don't miss anything. Orlando was amazing, the kids all had a great time. A couple nights, they closed the park down, or Universal and Aquatica was the water park, I think. They closed them down two hours early. Everybody else got chased out and our, our group got there two to two and a half hours just, just us. We had to have our little binky bracelets and stuff on. It was, it was quite amazing. One of the things, I know when we were coming back, I, when we got to the airport, there was a soldier coming home. Trying to take a pic. So that was, brings you back on. I'll let them speak, I think Savannah and Sophia are starting. That's what you told me. They'll tell you about their projects, what they did, and just a few things about Orlando.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you all for letting us go. I don't think I've ever had as much fun as I did going on a trip like this one. I learned so much just from being there, like there was people from Puerto Rico that were there. And what we did was like, we went to Aquatica, the water park, we had Universal Studios, we went swimming in the hotel pool like every day. I really liked that, the hotel rooms were super nice. But like the main area of where the NLC was located in, it was like a career expo and we learned like different career paths and like jobs that we could do for our future. And there's an FCC LA store that I probably think that Colter spent money there, but I don't know. Like, it was just amazing being there. Like I've never, well I have been to Florida, I just don't remember. Universal Studios was my favorite out of everything. I know it was like for FCC LA, but I think I had more fun doing like activities outside of FCC LA. Like the roller coasters, rides, stores, different environments, I just loved it all. It was super fun. And I'll remember it probably until I grow old. And everyone who went to nationals was very grateful that we were given this opportunity to go and I'm really thankful for you guys letting us.
Sophia and Savannah did the same event.
Yep, so again, I want to thank you guys for giving us this opportunity to go and just experience this trip. There was multiple things at the expo for us to do, such as workshops, the career expo, and a lot more fun things to do. We learned a lot with dedication throughout having to do months of practicing and just building our events, such as interior design is what we did.
Tell them a little bit about that.
For interior design, we had to make a model of a house indoor through 900 square feet and within, you know, decorate it and the interior. We placed third at state, but then our second, the, I think it was first or second dropped out, so we were able to be eligible to go to nationals. When we were there, we had fun, there was again like workshops and stuff to go to as well as a lot of vendors. We went to Aquatica, Universal, it was awesome seeing after they kicked everyone out at Universal, we were able to just see every FCC LA member wearing the red shirts that come with the Universal package as well as just like, for me at least, it was my first time on a plane, that was awesome. Yeah, no, I think we, we learned a lot and we're really grateful for you guys to let us go. So, thank you again.
Just to pick up the pictures.
And they all have the pictures, so I didn't, you know.
He sent us pictures. They sent the pictures, that's cool.
I'm ready.
You, Colter?
Well, I've been spoke already. We're doing a school weekend with friends. I don't think all of you know a whole lot about our project and how it helped us and what we did in our community and our school.
Yeah, we conducted interviews to people in the community and through school and we learned a lot about them and what they knew about FCC LA and what they would like to see for us. And we also started up our Instagram, Instagram page to like increase awareness.
We competed in...
Well, aside FCC LA.
That was hard to remember.
The title of the project was initiating an impact and the main point was letting people know what we were doing in FCC LA as a chapter and increasing engagement within our chapter with our members, recruiting new members and retaining them. And numbers proved, I wish we had our project to show you, that we did a pretty good job. And I think that's a lot of why we did so well at the state and national level.
Yeah, nationals, we placed seventh out of 63 teams. We got to on the national stage, which was pretty cool. But we got called three hours early to compete, so we kind of rushed and we were halfway, half a mile away from our hotel, so we had to run back to our hotel, get changed, and rush to compete, which really taught us that like you have to be prepared and be ready because you never know when you're gonna have to compete.
I know that I personally gained a lot from the entire experience from getting to compete, especially during nationals, but just getting to compete in general in FCC LA and work on this project throughout the entire school year. I definitely, both of us, I mean, a lot of time, a lot of work and effort, but getting to see the difference in our labor and getting to do so well and make it so far was fantastic.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you.
One more.
Yeah, well, I would like to thank you guys for the support and funding, especially for the airplane ticket, it was my first time on an airplane, except when I was like two months old, but we don't count that. And yeah, I had a pretty fun time in Orlando, we went to Aquatica, Orlando, what was it called, Universal, and then we went swimming a lot, roller coasters, and yeah. But overall, my, my partner was summer and we did interior design and we created like three boards and we had, we were required to have an Airbnb where it was Disney themed and each room was a different like movie and say, so like the living room, we had like Mickey Mouse and the kitchen, you had it too because, yeah, you understand. And then bedroom was Zootopia, master bedroom cars, outside Tarzan, and yeah, overall, we did pretty good. We had gold at nationals and we had a pretty fun time, especially being a week away from home. I mean, it was a little, little scary, but I, I got used to it and yeah, so I just wanted to thank you guys and yeah, have a good night.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Have your projects all picked out for this year? Or events, I should say.
Interior design, I have to get that, the scenarios aren't, it's a different scenario every year and that doesn't get released until I get all the, at least half, part of the dues submitted and paid, so I'm gonna get that done by the end of the week because they have been reminding me that they want to get going on it. So, yeah, it's, it's a different scenario every year, so it's kind of cool. This year, they said it was an Airbnb and they could choose between Harry Potter, Disney, and Barbie. The middle school kids did, there were several there, they did, they just had to do like the outdoor one. Each group competes at a different level. Middle schoolers compete just against middle schoolers, ninth and 10 graders compete and then the 11th and 12th graders compete at a different level. And we can have two in each, two entries in each cap board. So we're full up on interior design. All six teams are, all six pods are spoken for, so they're off and running, they're, I don't know if the high school kids are working on it, yet the middle schoolers are starting to check some things down. But again, we thank you so much for your support, it, it means a lot, not all schools have that. We definitely appreciate it. Thank you.
You keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Very hard, very hard. Great, great.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, great job. Thanks for the food.
You're welcome.
I recommend that the board accepts resignation of our head baseball coach, Randy Montalvo. I'll make that motion, accept their resignation.
Motion's been made.
Aye.
And motion was second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Just a group.
I would like to, I would like...
Exactly, yep, before, yes, it deserves to be said, Coach Montalvo did a lot for the baseball program in the last couple of years and he deserves a, a big thank you.
Yes, he's run from softball to baseball, has done a great job with both programs and yes, I think he's raised the bar for both programs, so.
Helps with the field renovation.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Greatly appreciated and thank him.
Yeah, wish him nothing but the best.
Yep.
5.2, hire special education paraprofessional.
I would recommend that the board hire Leann Miller as a part-time special ed paraprofessional.
And we need this paraprofessional because?
We have more and more students with IDPs that have moved in. Our, our number has grown to 60 district wide, so, and a number of them high needs, so this is why we need to, by state law, we need to have these minutes with, with paras, with, so this is why we are asking for a part-time pair.
I'll make a motion to approve the part-time special ed pair.
Motion's been made.
Aye.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're gonna table 5.3?
Yes.
Correct, 5.3 is made, table 5.4, discuss possible action of out-of-state field trips.
So we have a number of out-of-state field trips for the year. Do you want to do this as a whole?
I think so.
All right, basically everyone that we are gonna talk about have, have been ran before. So we have the FFA National Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana, October 28th through 31st for FFA, and then we also have another FFA rodeo, World's toughest rodeo over in Excel Center in St. Paul, February 13th. We have a Spanish trip, Renaissance Festival this Sunday at the Twin Cities. I believe they, I think they are combining with Greenwood and possibly someone else to go over there.
Greenwood for sure.
Okay.
I don't know about anyone else.
All right, NHS, they always take a trip during the year, so that trip is to be determined, but is usually out-of-state. The music department is looking at going to or wants to go to the Minnesota Orchestra in Minneapolis, Minnesota in April of 26. FBLA National Conference Competition, San Antonio, Texas, July of 2026. The FCC LA, which we just had right here, National Conference Competition, Washington DC, July of 2026. And then our last is our middle school trip to DC, which has been going for a number of years, that is in June of 2026.
What grades go on middle school trip to DC?
Seventh and eighth.
Seventh and eighth has been the main ones, yes, yes.
Because it's in June, it's the seventh and eighth grade they're in now?
Yes.
That will be.
Correct.
No, the one year for COVID, they allowed, kids that didn't go, had to go down.
So that's why they do it every other year. So if you're a seventh grader or sixth grader, I should say, you would have the opportunity to go, all righty, at one point, so.
Music department? What grade was that?
Fourth and fifth.
Fourth and fifth.
Yeah, fourth and fifth. April 16th.
Now, the, the trips themselves, they get paid out of like the FFA funding or what are, what is the board actually, what are we paying for or how does that get brought?
So your national competitions would be, the board would pay, the district would pay a portion of that, all righty? Because it gets up to, I think national is, I want to say $1,300 per.
That sounds like a little bit extra.
Middle, or DC trip is paid for by the student, NHS student, FFA, FFA takes care of, Spanish, Spanish club takes care of, or they pay for lack of registration fee.
Yep.
Music, the fourth and fifth grade, I do believe the music boosters help out, really don't think we, the district pays much of anything, of anything.
Sure. Yep, and I just wanted people to know we're approving this as one month sum, but it's not a, a blank check.
Correct.
Yeah.
These are pretty self, what would you say?
Self money.
By their club, group, whatever. So, so like music, they probably, I want to say they did budget some money for it, all righty, to help out with it, but a lot of it's self money, so, okay?
Any questions on out-of-state field trips?
Probably just a suggestion on the NHS, once they know where the trip is gonna be, just to bring it back, just so we know where it's gonna be, so we're confirming that before they're going, but otherwise I have no problem approving it, since we've done that fast. Tom, I'll make the motion that we approve all these trips.
Tom makes the motion to approve the out-of-state field trips as presented?
Second.
Second by Chris, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 5.5, discuss possible action, petition to alter school district boundaries.
Okay, we have a family on the southern outskirts, or not outskirts, not outskirts, in our district that is applying to be disattached and annexed to Nielsville.
Redistrict.
Redistrict. This is a process, all right, we're, I'm just bringing it up for discussion tonight, but we will have to notify, it is Nielsville School District where they want to annex to, and we have to give a hearing to this family person, whoever you want to say, before February 1st. So, and we need to, we'll do an application and that is part of the process that we make sure all this is, all our steps are done. So, my recommendation's going to be, no, do not have them redistrict, but that's just me. So I'm informing you, this family open enrolls to Nielsville right now, so, so that is, there's no qualms about that, we accepted their open enrollment.
Can I ask, the last time that the district was redistrict or the boundary's been redrawn?
Well, early 60s when, when room school houses and they were dividing up districts, other than that, we have not seen it. It has been here 30 years.
Three years, we've never done it.
And I've been here 32 and I haven't ever seen this.
And you answered my second question, the, the family in question can still open and roll, which they already do.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I believe this is more transportation related. My concern is with letting this go through would be the district would be losing money because we'd be losing that as a, one would be losing money, but it would raise everybody else's taxes because their property would no longer be in our district. That would be one form.
Can we lose students in our membership conference?
Yes, which we do get some money for.
I would be concerned with the precedence that it was set, especially for fringe, fringe families.
And as a clerk, I deal with Loyola and Greenwood right now, and there are people that have loyal addresses and Greenwood address, and when it comes to voting, there's been errors made just because the addresses and the school districts don't align. So, okay, that was the discussion I wanted to have, at least get it out there so you understand where we're at and what we need to do.
The hearing will take place with a special board meeting or at our board meeting in February, per state statute. All right, 5.6, discussion possible action on winter sports coaches.
All right, so looking to approve the following coaches tonight, we'll start with girls basketball. So we're proposing to approve Mike Reath as the varsity girls head coach, Angie Colbensberger as the varsity girls assistant coach, and then Mark Reath as the JV girls coach, and then Tony Wilkie as the middle school girls coach. We just want to do them all.
I'm fine with that if everybody else is okay with that.
Yep. Okay, and then for the boys, we are looking to approve Brandon DeSmett as the boys head coach, Louis Stiglitz as the JV boys coach, Stephen Arch as the JV2 boys coach, Dean Bogdanovich as a volunteer boys coach, Cameron Brusso as a volunteer boys coach, and then Jeremiah Hagan, Tom Wilkie, and John Atkins as middle school boys basketball coaches. Along with that, also approving our cheerleading coaches, Aaron Chaffto and Tara Reed.
I just want to clarify, you heard three middle school coaches for boys, that would be two paid positions, they would split it in thirds. You heard two volunteers for the boys basketball, it was our unpaid positions, all right, just so everyone is aware.
Any questions on the winter sports coaches?
On the JV and the JV2 for the boys basketball, is that two paid positions? Yes.
And our numbers are supporting those levels, so we would have three full levels in high school for boys.
You're looking at 30, close to 30 if not more, so, boys.
Is Stephen Arch, did he coach here a few years ago?
Yes.
Exercise science guy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Entertained a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve winter coaches.
Kirk makes the motion.
As presented.
Sorry.
Second by Davey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 5.7, discuss possible action on youth sports co-op.
I can take this one, or do you want to take this one? All right, so at our athletic committee meeting, we met with both Coach Reath and Coach DeSmett, so we'll start with the girls' recommendation first. We are recommending that we follow our head coach's recommendation to co-op fourth, fifth, and sixth grade girls basketball.
I would make a motion to accept as the athletic committee recommendation.
Recommendation.
All right, so we have a...
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to approve the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade girls basketball.
And you said that's what the coaches also...
Those coaches recommend. The coaches recommendation.
Yep. Motion is second, any questions?
I was just gonna say, at the athletic committee, it sounded like Mr. Reath had said that he had spoke to the Greenwood coach, they have talked about this several times, looked at numbers, and it's certainly something that's needed for both programs is what, what Mr. Reath said, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, on the boys side, the recommendation from Coach DeSmett and the athletic committee is to, the fourth grade numbers and fifth grade numbers for boys basketball at both schools were quite high, so the recommendation is to not do anything at this time with fourth and fifth grade. And for sixth grade, the numbers in Loyola were, I believe, were nine, and in Greenwood possibly as low as two. So the coaches' recommendations were if the Greenwood kids want to come join us here in Loyola, we would take them.
Which coach from Greenwood did you talk to? Can you bring his name up?
It would be Eric Johnson, they're, so Eric Johnson and Brandon DeSmett have been talking a lot about numbers and the possibility of this, so that is their recommendation at this time.
Any question on that recommendation?
Let's draw a motion approving then.
The motion doesn't really go up in, or I guess it's up in sixth.
Yeah, I would, yeah, let's do it, let's...
Are you gonna make a motion for the sixth grade, or up for the coach's decision?
Coach's recommendation, sorry.
I was gonna say, I can make a motion to keep the fourth and fifth grade boys basketball separate and allow the sixth grade coaches from Greenwood-Loyola to discuss if Greenwood would like to come over, they can. It's a long motion, I know.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And there's a second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 5.8, discuss possible action on the cross-country co-op agreement renewal with Greenwood.
Yep, so cross-country boys and girls are both up for renewal with our co-op this year, so the recommendation is to... the recommendation is to continue, uh, with that co-op agreement that we have with Greenwood.
What year is this co-op in?
Like, how long is that?
Yeah, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say two thousand one.
I was gonna say ninety-nine, two thousand, so you're talking twenty-four, five.
Right, yeah.
We've done this one a lot.
Hey, so was I.
Oh, two.
Oh, two? It was somewhere around there.
We had hockey, 'cause we were alone at the day, hockey, I don't remember calling.
Pull out some yearbooks tomorrow if you have a minute, right?
We're gonna find your yearbooks.
Uh, any questions on the co-op? Entertained a motion?
I'll make a motion to co-op cross-country with Loyal and Greenwood, boys and girls for the, through twenty-eight. Right, that's what you're saying, 'cause it's a two-year.
Yes. It's a twenty- Twenty-six through twenty-eight.
Yes.
Twenty-six through twenty-eight, so it's for two school years.
Motion's been made, any a second?
Second.
Second by Nikki, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Five point nine, discuss possible action on the ad hoc committee members.
Okay, um, at the la, at our joint meeting, uh, we had, I believe, four board members, or board members, ad hoc members. We had seven, we wanted to, both boards decided that, um, they wanted to even that out, so we opened it up, uh, on a remind, and on our Facebook page, I believe, uh, within a very short period of time, we had three, five, six, seven?
Yeah.
Alrighty? So, in order of how we received them, um, I'm asking to approve this, these members for ad hoc. The ones that came in late, we have put them down, their name and number, and if any of these want, don't wanna do it, we'll ask them, or if there's other committees that, um, develop, we will give them a shot at that, or if they're interested. Okay, so our members, ad hoc committees, branding, ad hoc committee is Travis Hendrickson, Jordy Mills, Mark Needham, Shannon Tofar, Dennis Rail, Amanda Stevens, and Robin Bender.
And these seven will work with the seven from Greenwood.
That is correct.
And we, as a board, at the next joint meeting, will, will have a discussion along with Greenwood on what it is we want the ad hoc committee to come back to the board with, so. Yeah.
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve as read in the ad hoc committee members for the branding.
Kirk makes a motion to approve the ad hoc committee as presented.
Second.
Second by Tom, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five point ten, discuss possible action on the phase two of the Loyal Elementary parking lot proposal.
So, we did, we did phase one, um, right now we are working with Point of Beginning and HSR um, on developing a design, a plan for the parking lot, which we are working on towards, uh, getting started June first, June second, something like that, as soon as we are done with school, so that process or that project can be done by the time we get back into school in August, when teachers come in. So, phase two of this would be to take the next level, which would be, um, stormwater management, construction documents, here's the big stuff, is permit preparation and bid coordination. Uh, we wanna put bids out, uh, by November, at the latest, November, they said November, December, but we wanna get it approved so we can get that going. We talked about in our building and grounds meeting, um, having our next plan finalized at our meeting and inviting our neighbors that will be affected to the east on this, or may be affected, um, to come and join us and look this over, so they are aware of what, what we are doing.
One correction, Chris, I think the bidding would actually get put out when we had the meeting, which is January, February, instead of this year, but we need to get the ball rolling down this point.
Yep, yes, state approved.
State approved, but I think the Point of Beginning and HSI sent that out.
Yep, right.
And we need to get approval now, so they can get that done then.
Yep.
Correct.
So, the cost of phase two is twenty-two thousand dollars. That is all your engineering fees. For that portion.
Yeah, the project itself is gonna cost a lot, around twenty-two thousand dollars. And I would say from a building and ground standpoint, where we are ninety-nine percent done with the disassembly, now, we would, we, they can certainly move forward with quantities and putting together a proper bid packet now. I, I don't see it changing much anymore.
So, just a note, we've had issues with that north end of that parking lot, recently, especially where, where it's washed out, so we have had it, um, fixed, Suda came in and, and fixed it for us. Costs us a little bit of money, but it is, it's serviceable for up until June now, until we get this thing moving, so.
I think it also is a safety issue.
Yes, yes.
Any additional questions on the parking lot proposal for phase two? Motion to approve pha, phase two?
I'll make a motion to approve phase two of the elementary parking lot.
Davey makes a motion, second by Kirk, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five point one-one, accept donations.
Okay, have a number of donations, uh, here, so, uh, we'll talk real quickly about, um, Kobe Meadows is wanting to donate three MIG welders to the tech ed department. I would recommend that, that we accept. Concession stand, RZ Builders, Suda Plumbing, Rocket and Concrete donated, um, a number of material, uh, obviously some labor, things like that, uh, for our concession stand, um, asking to accept that, uh, I would like to thank everyone there. The Cabistas gave, uh, money to the little pups, little dogs, thank you, greatly appreciated for that. Uh, and we also had a number of others donate to the little dogs and little pups that we will combine with Cabistas with, a thank you in, in the paper, there is a vista vum here, whether they donated cash, whether they donated, um, toys, materials for the, for the little pups, little dogs room, uh, it's all greatly appreciated. We will celebrate these guys on our website, paper, very soon. I would like to thank all of them. Uh, we had, we had planned a open house celebration, uh, for the new concession stand last Friday. Due to weather, everything got moved up again, so we were going to have that open house and acknowledgement of our contractors, and thank you on October third. Friday, October third, homecoming game, six o'clock, open house, thank you, um, have a little speech. Alright, little gift bag for our contractors, so, um, a lot of great things here that have been donated, or are in the process of donation, so I would strongly recommend that we accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation as presented.
Motion's been made and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Yeah, thank you so much to all the people donating to the school over the last couple of years, it's really, it's, it's awesome to see.
I'm going to add on this, alright, uh, we have just purchased our Suburban from K and H. There was a donation in there where he reduced the price by five grand, so, um, I would have that one approved also, alrighty?
I'll make a motion to approve the donation from the Suburban.
That's from K and H Auto?
Yes, K and H Auto. I will, I will go on and just talk real quickly about it, um, so it was, it was in an accident, it is not, it is
Cleaned out.
Cleaned out, thank you. They fixed it, got it, it's good, uh, Chief and I went through it, inspected it, uh, went through it thoroughly, I believe, felt very good about what we have, um, it's all, it's a good thing, very good thing, and I would like to thank K and H for all their work and donation.
Yeah, I'll leave a second.
I second, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, yep, second on the Suburban, all those in favor of the Suburban?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five point one-two, discuss possible action on agreement for use of space.
Okay, every year, uh, Clark County Community Services, they, they use an office in our elementary where they meet with students. It's a little, it's convenient for our students and our families here, because they don't have to go drive somewhere, they're right here, um, we've done this for many, many years. I, I, I recommend that we do it again, and I recommend that we, we just do it. I just sign it and approve it every year, I don't think we have to bring it back all the time, so, it's been a very good thing for us and our students, so.
I think it saves the parents from taking out of work and also grabbing out of Nielsville to take their kids. Um, so I'll make a motion to approve this, uh, agreement of build, shared building space used with Clark County for this year and following years.
Motion's been made?
Second.
Second by Tom, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discuss possible action on short-term borrowing.
Okay, so, we're at the point where, which we've done this in the past, uh, it's been a little while, but, um, at the point that we do not get our equalization a big check until December first, or the very first part, and we run, um, we're gonna run right short, or just about with short, between, in November, so, uh, my, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna recommend that we do a short-term borrowing of a million dollars when we get our checks, then it will all clear out, and we'll be back to where we're at. So we, you know, that's just where we're at, last year we were close, very close, that we needed to do that, so, we had an uptick of, of staff members, which we, which we talked about earlier, um, that has kind of put this into a little bit more of a situation for this year. But I just want you to know that we've done this in the past, and, and, um, it has all worked out previously.
And this is something that our, our bookkeeper is familiar with, then?
Yes, yes.
Remember as well?
Yep.
My question is, I wish the board could see the projected numbers for this year that we haven't seen yet for future years if we have to do this, 'cause we haven't seen the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six yet.
Which will recur on the same.
It would be nice to have it now, before we would want to approve borrowing if we have to do it again for future years.
Any more questions on the short-term borrowing? Entertained a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the short-term borrowing.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five point one-four, update strategic plan.
Okay, uh, just a few things I wanna talk about, uh, dealing with our strategic plan. Few areas, uh, we talked about, uh, one of our places is Yulin, uh, and what I wanna talk about there is, is our work on our, on our elementary parking lot, um, like Derek said, we are really close of having that finalized and moving forward with that, which is, I believe, much needed. Concession stand has been, um, up and running. Saturday we did have a little defunct with the toilets, worked well, uh, Friday night, uh, that is being fixed this week, so, uh, that has been a very good thing for us. Uh, and I would say, we talk about opportunities, our three K and our little dogs, little pups, little dogs program, is, is in a, working into a, a smooth transition into being, the first time uh, we have, I believe, thirty-eight registered little dogs. Not that, that's, there's thirty-eight there every night, but there, there's mid twenties there every night, and a handful in the morning. Uh, little pups we have, which is our three K program, um, that room has developed because of our donations and, and what Dodi Ram has done with that, um, with that room, uh, we are sitting at eleven registered. Right now there's ten in there, and there'll be one more coming, uh, in January. And that has been, uh, something that has been a positive, and we're very excited for that to grow. Talk about more opportunities, um, we have, next, uh, Monday we have CISA four, a couple gals coming from CISA four talking about liftoff, and what liftoff is, is AI, um, a new, a new way of learning, uh, and, and I think that'll be, we have a, probably fourteen or fifteen teachers that are definitely interested in this, uh, they are going to go and, CISA four reps are going to talk to them and, and get them rolling on where their interest is and what they wanna dive into, uh, very good, uh, really good about, uh, not just students are not the way we were students, sit and get and things like that, and it's, it's all about, uh, being active, and we have kids that are bored, students that are bored, that, we've seen a lot of different, um, scenarios here with AI and, and where things have taken off, scores have been, and not enrichment, but just their, their attendance and their, and, um, engagement is the word I'm looking for, yes, it's been very good. So, piggybacking off of that, uh, Mike Bailey from Whitehall, Superintendent Whitehall, uh, is a big backer of this. Uh, they have sixteen districts that are involved with this liftoff, um, and he was one of the initials that got this started, uh, he talked in Cornell today, uh, Tom and I went up and listened to him, and he talked to their, their district and the kids, the teachers, the staff, and just talked about how learning is different than what we have, what we're used to, and we need to start changing. He has been in China for eight days in August, and just showing the difference of what they have done, you know, technology-wise compared to where we're at. We need to change our, uh, train of thought on how we do things, and I thought it was, it was awesome, um, something that we are looking at, bringing him in here to talk to our students, Greenwood students together, whatever, and staff, uh, very just point-blank, uh, just really talks about, but worrying about the grades, worry about learning, uh, to the teachers, to the students at that, at that school district, um, so, very good, and we are looking at taking, um, a group over to Whitehall to look at what they're doing with AI in their classrooms, what their tech ed program looks like. Uh, they deal with robotics, they deal with, um, drones, uh, a little, a little more outside of the box than what we saw over at Luxembourg Castle, alright, so, Tom, I don't know if you wanna say anything about it?
I would say he shared a lot of, um, charitable, there were, in videos and pictures of what some of the, the technology and AI in particular, if any of you have, have- If any of you have, have seen. They look like robotic dogs. I mean, they, they're, they're built and you can basically program them to do many, many things, but. You know, it, it's something that may be used in business, that may be used in, you know, in personal homes, wherever, but it's. The technology is there as well as more robotics, and, and basically challenge the kids to think. That, you know, the jobs that we have now or the jobs that we're gonna, that are gonna be out in the future. Some aren't created yet, or, and some are, and you have to be willing to learn and adapt to the new technology, however that is. And if you can continue to learn throughout your, your life, not only in school, but as you graduate and, and start in your careers, that. That you're gonna be further ahead and. Just, you know, the experience he's, he had in China and how far, how much farther they are ahead with technology, yet our, our education system. Is stronger than what theirs is according to what he was, he was mentioning, so it's. It's like we have the opportunity to try to, try to improve our learning by, by adapting to some things, so. It will be interesting to see what, what Whitehall is doing, and it's not just, it's. You know, automation, you know, thinking of automation and how, you know, things that require people now are gonna be. Some of those tasks are gonna be taken over by, you know, some automations and things there, so.
Couple things to add on that is, he talked about how you look at a lot of our school system. How we run things is exactly how we were when we were a big, huge manufacturing country, alright? A bell tells you, when you get a break, you go down, you go sit, and you do the same thing or learn. And it was very monotonous, and that's how we've been trained as educators with our students, and. He said they are doing the same thing in China, but it's just dealing with technology. They're really pinholeing them in that. And he talked to people that were over there that were Americans that. Moved over there for whatever reason. And they said, we don't get to, what was the word? I, I don't want to say free spirit, because it's not free spirit, but. Just think outside the box and be, be. Gosh, what, what's the word I'm thinking?
Creative.
Creative. Yeah, just be creative, and just, they're really pigeonholed on, this is what you're doing, so. That aspect of our, of our education system is sought out after, you know, from them. One kid said about this, because they had robots, they had a two hundred and six, two hundred and twenty-pound robot that was moving different things. One of the kids said, well, aren't these robots gonna take our jobs? And he says, see, you're small-minded, you don't think like that. Think big picture. You are gonna create that robot, you are gonna program that robot. And there's a lot of jobs that people don't want that are labor-sump, so. He was just saying, you know, there's a, the, the whole world's out there, and we're not, we are internationally competitive. Alright, these kids are gonna have to be internationally competitive against others out there, not just Loyal, Greenwood, Clark County, it's going to be. Worldwide, so.
One, one other point is that CVTC has a program now, I think largely because of Mr. Bagley. That is more or less an automation degree, so if you can get trained in just the whole concept of automation, that you're gonna be able to adapt to various. Types of jobs, so I, you know, I think that we can lean on our technical colleges for some assistance in how we proceed.
So we talked about opportunities, we talked about our strategic plan, this is a direction that. I feel like, believe others feel, it's a direction that is a good direction to go, so. And it gives our kids, our kids will be, I believe, better prepared to compete. In the, in the world, international world. Okay, one thing I forgot. Our roofs, we talked about what we did with our building, our roofs, we have started that process of making sure our roofs are. Phased, make sure they're not leaking, so replacement there, okay? I think so, those were the main topics of the strategic plan that I wanted to cover tonight.
I'd like to thank you, Chris, for the update and taking the strategic plan that the people have put together and putting it into effect. One thing, when I was in the strategic plan, my question is, they were gonna have a committee that was in with us, giving us presentations rather than doing it.
Yep.
Can you have that next time?
Yep, that's what we just talked about at our admin meeting Tuesday.
Okay.
Thank you, alright, you bet.
Alright, five point one five, discuss the joint board meeting with Greenwood.
Okay, so the next joint board meeting in Greenwood is Wednesday, October fifteenth. Starting with tours, I believe they will, I don't know where they're gonna start, but it starts at six P M.
They say door three?
Yeah.
Alright, going into high school first, middle school high school, and then they're gonna bust you up over to the elementary. Okay, meeting starts at seven thirty then? So. Talk about the RFP, that is out. I believe we have probably. Seven, eight. That have acquired, between acquiring and, and companies that we've dealt with, that we've sent it to. That are out there, that, that they have it, so. I, I think it really picked up this week, I think we, in the, this week, we've had probably four or five between the two of us. Asking for literature on it or information, so. Get it on our web, I don't know if it's on our website or not, I gotta check that out. But they saw it in the paper, they saw it somewhere, so. And not just companies in Wisconsin, I believe there's one in DC or New York and then Maryland, so. So they're, they're out there, so.
I think at the, at the joint board meeting, the conversation will need to start to transition to how the interview process will go. And number of people, I, I, from each school board, I would think, obviously administrators can be on the committee, but I would like to see at. Minimum two members of each school board. You know, and then they would come up with the recommendation after the interviews.
Recommendation who to hire?
Correct, yep.
Do you think you don't want full board samples?
I don't think, I mean, that's a lot of people, I, I don't think you need to have a full board. That would be, I, I think that would get a little extreme.
So they're doing that many companies?
Yeah, I, I think you take two, two members from each seven-person panel, and then you would trust them.
They don't have.
They're going to, yeah, they voted at their end meeting.
By the time we have to do this?
No, April, April.
I thought there was gonna be a point to.
No, if we only do two, we don't need it for this. So to your point, yeah, either way, I think two is the number, I don't, I don't, I think two would be fine. I, I don't believe the whole board needs to be there, I think that would do too much coordination and I think a little overkill.
We've talked about that joint board meeting, how many? Anything else, I, I, we will have weighted grades on that topic.
Yep.
For, on the agenda, is there anything that you, this board would like to see on that agenda?
Direction of the ad hoc committee branding.
Alright, I, yep, just put that, ready? Anything else?
I guess I would like to revisit, it's not gonna be popular, but. Two meetings ago, we had a vote on there, we were short a board member at that point in time. On the video taping and recording, live streaming and recording on there. And I think transparent, again, talking about that, letting people know, I think I just saw that recently, I'm assuming under your direction, Mr. Lender. The video directed by the board, obviously that they wanted to remove the Greenwood and Loyal co-board meetings, and they've all, if anybody hasn't already. Realized that, they're gone. I don't know if they, are they archived or are they gone like you deleted them?
They're not deleted.
Okay.
No, they're archived.
They're archived, okay. I think at this point in time, in consolidation, if we have the full two boards being there again, I think we should have it back on the agenda for discussion and action. On putting them back on and continuously live streaming and recording them, keeping them. From here on, it's an important time during consolidation, and I think people of both school districts deserve the right to be able to go on and look at if they want to, so I'd like to request a back, back on agenda. For a revote, discussion and action.
I agree with that, I'd have to talk about it again. So when I re-watched it, one of the. Topics that came up was the most current information. Sometimes the most current information is not from that previous meeting, it's from a few meetings ago, because not everything is discussed at every meeting. So when I re-watched that, because I was absent at that meeting. That was one of my concerns with deleting them, because it's not always the most current information, sometimes it is previous.
Not current, or you mean not talked about at that meeting? I think it's very hard to say now.
Yep.
Right, so if we talked about it two months ago and we don't talk about it last month?
Right. But if you delete it, then it's gone.
And then probably, and kind of what I alluded to at the last joint meeting was more. Our curriculum as a, you know, looking ahead, the curriculum between the schools and whether. We want to see if there's some areas that businesses would like to see us.
Still focus in on?
And so that, that's. I know that we will be, Mr. Lender and I will be meeting with. Mr. Green and, and one of their other board members to try to put together a plan as to how, you know. How we can go about seeking information, whether it's one-on-ones or if we would recommend just have, having a date that we. Pull some businesses in to try to get some discussions going. So that we can, we can have some of that information as, as the. When they're working on the proposals. That we, you know, if, if that information changes where things will be located or could possibly be located, there's some opportunities.
Essentially, this is the second ad hoc meeting, that's what I was asking, is going for a second ad hoc meeting?
Oh, yeah, that would be.
This is the second ad hoc meeting.
So I guess moving forward with that, then.
So how would we name that committee?
Name it in that, talk about it in that, the joint, is what I would say, I would recommend.
Any other topics you want to discuss quick on the joint board meeting? Alright, let's move into other business, principals' reports. Thank you. Oh, I, I'm sorry, you gotta come back, I decided to add it, no?
On that note. At this time, we're a month into the school year, and I, I feel like our students and our staff are comfortable with routines and procedures. And have went over all those expectations of the first few weeks, and everybody's rolling well. In this short little time, we've had a lot of things happening in the district. We've had Seal a Smile come in for students four K through twelve, which come in and puts sealants on kids' teeth. We had Prayer Run Dental come in and meet with some of our primary elementary kids, to talk about dental. Care and just making sure they're all brushing with a little cute baby, so if anybody's parents came home with or saw that little baby come home, they were in the building today. Something exciting as a celebration, Simplicity had their five hundred deposits at the end of the school year. And we had a big blow-up jump house that all the elementary students got to be part of and supervised by some of our high school students. So a big shout-out to Visarki for making that happen. Our wellness committee put on a staff tailgate before the football game last Friday that was highly attended and very grateful to. Put some staff bonding things together, it was a great way to start off the football game, even though we were inside because of the weather. So, great thank you to them. Elementary and middle school, really in high school, have been working on PBIS, so positive behavior initiatives. And tomorrow is going to be our first rollout with a Google Meet that Mr. Seglow is going to do at the elementary. And then on Friday, our middle school and high school students will be announced as well. We had breakfast with buddies, if you were there, it was over a hundred parents that came in for some donuts in the elementary with their students. It was a great day to see parents come into the building, and we had a lot of thank-yous for allowing parents this opportunity to come back and visit, and they're looking forward to some more opportunities with that. I would like to do a big shout-out to Clummy Exterior Cleaning, they came this past weekend and powder washed the playground's equipment. It looks great, Mr. Bennett's super excited, it looks nice and shiny and bright. So they came in over the weekend and got that all cleaned up for our kids, so. Big shout-out to Justin and Kirsty Clements for coming in and doing that. Middle school and high school had band participation in the Grandin and Greenwood Parade. Our juniors went on a field trip to CBTC and UW Player earlier this, last week. We had fall sports pictures. We had FFA go to a fall leadership, well, actually, we hosted that fall leadership here last week as well. Highly attended, a lot of classrooms taken off with a lot of students from all over in the building, thank you to Mr. Lender for doing the welcome, appreciate that.
It was three hundred plus students were registered for that, yeah.
Been a busy couple of weeks.
Yes.
We actually had add-up testing today with some of our juniors that chose to take that test. And then. Fifth grade goes tomorrow to the high ground for their field trip. So, only a short few weeks, but it's been busy and jam-packed, full of a lot of fun events. Just for upcoming events, just so parents are aware, Friday, there is no elementary students. Staff are getting together to go over data, so looking at student achievement, attendance, behaviors, looking at what we can do to help create more successful opportunities for our kids. And to really dive into looking at the areas that they need more focus and help. No school is on Monday, the twenty-ninth, we have teacher-in-service. And next week, Tuesday, World Dairy Expo, big thing for the FFA two times, so, kind of what's happening the next couple of weeks.
Can put in a request.
Oh, actually, one more big thing next week, homecoming, everyone, homecoming next week. So big shout-outs to the business, thanks for letting our kids come patron windows. Everybody be prepared for the fun, Friday, filled event of high schoolers probably running everywhere.
I think it's kind of a week full of events, isn't it?
Yes, it will be.
Dan can probably attest this, years ago, special events came up, poor Dan had to sit on ladders and cover signs, no parking signs. We had an incident way back when where a part-time officer came in and worked and ended up not knowing that there was an event going on, saw the cars parking in the no parking areas and ticketed. I don't want that to happen, and I don't think we should have to go back to poor Dan all the years covering signs up, but I think at least in not even putting the signs out anymore, it, it would at least be a call from somebody in your staff. To maybe give up a heads-up or something like that.
Sure, for the breaks.
So that way if something happened, at least we have a document, hey, there's a, coming up, so don't, don't, you know, issue parking tickets on those event days, just that.
Okay.
I do, but in case I'm not working or someday when I retire and somebody else comes, I can just tell you.
Perfect, thank you for that.
Alright, all good? Perfect, super good report.
Okay, talked about liftoff, AI with teachers coming up, talked a little bit about Mr. Bagley and Whitehall. District will receive a Quest grant for our little pups program. Little dogs through CISA ten, which will be for about seventy-five hundred dollars. So, good thing there, I would agree with Mrs. Comethberger, a shout-out to Clummy Exterior Washing for donating his. Wash of our elementary equipment, playground equipment. All I've heard was positive, great thing, so thank you very much. Again, on Thursday, September eighteenth, Loyal FFA Chapter hosted that regional leadership workshop. Like I said, a lot of people here, a lot of great, a lot of. Like I said, a lot of people here, a lot of great, a lot of great enthusiasm. And so since we have Parker Smith as our, as our state officer, that's why we have, we get to host it. So a shout out to Parker and Debbie Henkman, who is a former state officer, FFA state officer. Both of them kind of worked together and, and put this on with the state office, officer crew here was, was very good. Complete Control has been in the district the past week or so. Had to reprogram the air handler in the elementary office controls. They were not doing what they were supposed to be doing, what it was programmed to do. And they will be back again and I do believe they have to do the LMC air handler, alright, because the same issue. Okay, a little branch off of Building and Grounds. So from Building and Grounds, we had a number of items that went to the city council. So a little report back on that. We want to do some improvements to the softball field. Council proved that their city crew could work, donate two days of work up on the softball field if the school district would, would pay for materials. So we're talking about putting a, a, a three or four loads of dirt in left and right, or left and center field, correct?
Yes.
And then kind of skimming a couple of four inches off of the existing infield and replacing it with the material that we have on our baseball field. Up to what? Four to six inches?
Yeah, six inches.
So district wouldn't pay for that. They would do all the work for us with that. It's, it hit a snake, so they approved that. Hit a snake where the Wapaka company is on hold on trying to grab that and get some more material. So it was all spoken for.
It does sound like early next week, they will have material ready to come to Loyal. Now we just need to work on transportation.
I'll take the personal day. You got a truck?
I was going past her. I'll wait for the last week and a half.
Yeah.
Okay, I've got, I got one.
I'm gonna use the Suburban.
I won't. Alright, so that's where that is. Still on that from the city council. Street and parking lot holes and lights. There's two existing holes out there. One needs to be moved because it is leaning. The anchor is too close. So they were gonna move that to the east a little bit, re-anchor it, and then put lighting for both the parking lot and the street lighting on that one. And then there's one, they wouldn't have to move as an existing pole, they would put lighting on both of those. The cost is about $4,600. We talked about sharing that, splitting that with the city. At this point, the city does not have it in their budget. They would, if, if we wanted to go ahead and do that, the city would, we would bill the city next budget year and then they would pay it. I feel right now, I would like to see how, how, where we're at right now with it. We have football games out there and kind of let it ride for right now. If we, if I think that we need to do something, I would, this is the direction I would go.
Something that was brought up in that meeting, the council meeting was, and was brought up, is that your bid for that cost is a deadline and then they could increase it. I'm not saying it would be a ton of money that would be increased, but that's kind of the, the talk was that, you know, if you want to guarantee locking that price for what it's gonna be, right? The city doesn't have the budget, but you could, it has supposed to, the bill goes to the city, but you'd have to cut the check, the city would pay it. And then after the first year, the city's gonna budget for it and then would reimburse it. And that's why you're locking your costs right now, but it could increase if you don't do it now.
And one other note that when we did this fire hydrate out here, the city will pay for, I believe, three sections of sidewalks. So we had like about nine of them done because they were all cracked and so that is all redone. We'll take care of that.
When is the deadline for that blocking at that price?
I will look tomorrow and we'll figure it out, alrighty? If it is, we will call Excel and see once where it would compare. Yeah, where it would compare.
Something we can talk about the next billion grounds.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's something that if I decide I want to do it, we can do it because it's under the 10 grand. So we really talked about for safety, like Friday night games, football games, but not just football, but you have a lot of parking there. Even during basketball and volleyball and, and other times where it's not just using that field. So we just thought safety was, and that's what I wanted to kind of look at here.
Would that also help with new handicap spots?
It would have more lighting, yes.
If we would have done that 15 feet, it might get a little bit more over there too. And there's a dark spot in the parking lot. That's what you guys noticed and I could pay attention to that too, that you're not, and you do light. That's why the second light at that hole is written up a little bit in there.
Okay. Also approved handicap parking for football field entrances. Where it's on is it would be on the north side of central. Two, two spots. You have a walkway, two spots to the east, two spots to the west. We are working on getting, we have temporary signage. We're working on getting signage for that for next week. Talked about concession stand, grand reopening or grand opening or open house. That one. And talked about what we went and saw. Tom and I, well, Eliza and Joe from Greenwood. It was a very good experience, so. Last thing I would say, kudos, thank you to our staff, our administration. It's, we're over five weeks in, five and a half weeks, and it feels very like we're four months in, alright? I think everything's going very smooth. It's been a very good, very good deal. So I greatly appreciate our staff and everything that they have done. There have been some wrinkles and ripples at the beginning that we need to adjust and they were unbelievable on what they did for our students. So thank all of them. And thank the school board.
I just want to thank you out there too to Jess Arkey, our FCA advisor for this morning. So you guys probably wrote your reports before this, but. So this morning, if you're not aware, See You at the Pole is an event that happens, and this has been happening here for several years. My family went this morning. There's approximately 40 to 50 kids out there, parents, staff, students, teachers. And they gather at the flagpole out front of school and they pray for our district and our students, staff. Prayers for admin, prayers for the board members, just for guidance throughout, you know, our decision-making process. Prayers for safety for our students. And I just want to shout out to Jess Arkey for always organizing that and getting kids to come. And it's just a really cool experience to watch these people come together and create their district, so.
Yeah. It, it was really neat to see. I just happened to see it quickly and it was very nice.
I think the first year that I went, there was maybe 10 or 15. And I would say there, I didn't count, but over 40 this morning.
So the other day, they had an F, like a little. Yeah, what do you call it? A little? Huddle, there you go. Yeah.
You should play us.
I have nothing to do with it. So I, but I happened to walk in and there was 15 boys in that FCA huddle, alright? So it was, it was good to see, so. Shout out to Mrs. Arkey. Thank you.
Set meeting dates.
Annual meetings, but I have to get set, huh?
Sorry.
Has it set?
Yep.
October 20th is that?
Monday?
It should be a Monday.
Third Monday? The 20th is the third Monday. So that's annual board meeting.
What time is that issue?
What time?
I think it's on September 13th.
So the 23rd would be the fourth, the fourth, I'm sorry, the 22nd would be the fourth Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, cause then we have to approve it.
Okay.
So 22nd.
October 22nd. Full board. Six close, seven.
Yep. And if, if closes light?
We can adjust.
Yep, we can adjust, so.
Joint board on the 15th.
Yeah, we will.
15th, joint board. 20th annual meeting. One meeting a month, right Dave? Building and grounds. Next week or the week after?
Let's go, um, let's do finance first. Let's do a finance.
Finance is everyone.
What is October 1st?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. 6:00 or 6:30. What does that look like for everyone?
Next week or July 4th is it?
Uh huh.
Okay.
The following week would be better. Candidate. I have a football game on the 7th, but we won't have. Monday and Thursday. Thursday's equipment hand, yeah.
No volleyball game here.
It was 30th September. Is that too short?
Volleyball, Monday.
6th. Monday.
Yeah, the first Monday.
TV football game.
Is that Spencer? That would be there. Alright, Building and Grounds, morning, 7:00 AM. Can I reach out to Brad, sign this in? And see what's.
Where they're at?
What he can make. Give me a second.
So you're thinking of the week of the 6th for Building and Grounds?
Yeah.
7:00 AM.
We were gonna do a policy meeting, so Chris.
Yeah. That's an update. Yeah.
When? I probably, you know, when Dave's.
Give me a second.
He only had like two days that we're not good for him, otherwise he could work out any of the one. Our new guy would be coming.
Retired, I think he's doing this. Can we push him towards the end of the month?
For policy?
Yeah.
I would see why not.
I would, yeah. He only had a couple.
I would say like the 5th and 6th he was in the zone, otherwise I think we could work anything out.
Give me some ballpark number where you're thinking for another month. Good 20.
I hope the 27th, that week of the 27th.
The week of the 27th.
Alright, I'll just grab some dates.
Yeah, the week of the 27th we'll go with.
Something during the day.
Yeah, that's the day one.
So that's policy day?
Policy.
If it's Monday, it's the month of the 27th, that'll work.
Why don't we schedule a plan on the 27th then?
Okay.
If he can't or that doesn't work, let me know and I can figure it out.
About 9:00 AM or something like that.
9:00 or 10:00? I'll try, alright.
See how far it wants to. Where is he dragging from? I don't know where it's going.
Do you actually set?
We can do 6, 4. 6, 4. No, we didn't.
Building and grounds.
Building and grounds, we're gonna look at the week of the 6th, but he's gonna get back to us when Brad's available.
Alright.
Put it to be 7:00 AM set at some point.
Will we look back to 5?
We didn't.
Week of the 6th.
Finance?
No, finance we haven't.
Should be before the 20th.
It has to be before the 20th.
Was the 13th look like?
No, I got board meeting that night. 14th I could do.
Tuesdays and Thursdays are probably gone.
Before, before the joint meeting?
Yeah.
Thursday, the 9th.
Justifying.
Are you talking finding us before?
Yeah.
Before?
If you can fit it in if you're bringing it there.
That'd be 5 o'clock or so. In an hour. 5 o'clock.
20th is what I think.
15.
Well, we got 16.
Oh.
So we didn't have a full hour. We still gotta travel over.
This is a Wednesday, so I got it over for me.
5 o'clock is pushing it.
Yeah. You have a what?
So 5 o'clock is pushing it.
4:30 then? Oh, pushing it that way, alright.
Right, like if it doesn't work, if kids get home, get here by 5.
5:03?
I'll give you 5.
So you're saying you can do it?
Just get the day and help, yeah, I'll figure it. All of this time it's usually taking. It's a long one.
Nah, it's been about an hour.
So we have to be in agreement before 6.
Before 6, so that would be.
The 8?
What time would you do the 13th? Cause my meeting's not till 7 at night. Would we do it earlier on the 13th?
She talked about, I talked to Julie, she talked about 6ish. If we do it earlier, she'd do it earlier.
Well, how about 6 o'clock on the 13th?
But if it's an hour long, does that give you enough time? 5:30 would be okay?
I don't, I just gotta go five miles north below my meeting from here.
That's football equipment tournament, isn't it?
No. No. 13th at 6 o'clock.
Youth football, sorry.
Equipment tournament, which doesn't affect me really. I mean, I gotta drop.
But if we have it at, if we have it at 6, it'll be done. It's half the week. 13th at 6. Uh, that night, I don't know. I didn't coordinate that one. I just have to be there. 13th at 6. Finance, done.
We are your family, yours.
You got a new family, you can utilize it. Anything else to schedule? Most of the days are used.
That's enough.
I might not be able to make it on the 22nd, but you anticipate, I know it takes it so hard, that it's gonna be a long board meeting in October.
I didn't anticipate this to be a lot.
I was just trying to figure out.
So there's a lot of, I don't see that. You, you're gonna have to, we gotta pass the levy.
I'm just trying to figure out, but I'm only one person, so there's a way to have less meetings, but have it on the 20th. Have the annual and then do a board meeting or something like that after or something. As I said, it's gonna be pretty long, as I said, as I said.
I think the last couple of years, we've had special meetings after the annual.
So I'm just trying to figure out.
I'd be okay with combining two of them one night, just saying.
I don't know that I'll be there on the 22nd.
And that's also parent-teacher conferences that week, so we have Tuesday, Thursday conferences.
I like the idea of 20th. Could we just do regular board and do the regular board after the special meeting?
After the annual?
After the annual.
Don't leave that up before we could.
We've got special meetings after.
I didn't celebrate. Regular. That's what I was gonna say, if we pass it, is there enough time?
Well, could we, could we move it down a half hour or something, an hour down the annual and then put?
Why me this question if you can have it on the same day because for people to look over things after you pass something for the public? Is that legal?
I mean.
No, cause the public's gonna vote on it.
Huh?
Spencer's done it that way or they have. I don't think it's an issue.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Because compliance is how I do, you don't have to love you, so.
Back to back in the summer.
I think I'm rejecting my, you know, what we guys be managing. I think I'll check in my, you know, I guess being annual.
It's, I, I.
There's an issue there.
I would be fine if we did do everything on the twentieth.
Me too.
I don't have a problem with it.
Could we move on to time?
Six thirty? Six thirty-seven?
No.
It's already been out there.
That's set.
That is the first year.
That is until seven thirty. So if you have the board meeting after it, you won't be out of here. The line's worked.
Been before, been a month before.
You can't do it before because we have to approve the annual.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta.
We've got a lot of stuff to spend the night.
We've been here till eleven before.
Yeah, I'd buy with that. I, everybody else is. I really get it all done in one night and have to come two nights in a row and have parent teachers that week too. Just the same.
Whatever, whatever.
We all know that whatever, that whatever.
Well, we don't, our problem is we don't know when the annual meeting's gonna be done. So how do you set the time on the next meeting?
Following.
Yeah, you can say following, but if we don't get done with the annual meeting for some reason until ten o'clock.
Then we're having a ten o'clock meeting.
There is no reason.
No, it shouldn't. I mean.
It should, but sometimes they do. The last couple of years had them very sure.
Yeah, very sure. Well, there was no one there. The annual, yeah, I've never been a part of a long annual meeting.
We all have some things we don't wanna do.
So the twentieth it is? Or the twenty-second? Whatever. I'm trying to think what will be on the agenda besides this.
Where is the annual meeting posted? Cause on our website and board docs, there's nothing about the annual meeting. So.
It has been posted there. I love the agenda. But if you look at the minutes of last year's annual meeting, it says next year's meeting will be on this day.
But is the time set? Is that guess what I'm asking?
I think yes.
Sorry.
I said it's set.
Let's try.
Since the minutes.
Yeah.
Since the minutes of last year's. I was like, cause I already had that in my phone, so that makes that.
Alright, I'm gonna say.
We'll say next year that this meeting.
We're gonna go with the twentieth. Let's move on.
So regular meeting.
Regular meeting. The annual meeting, follow that, regular meeting on twentieth.
To follow.
To follow. Yep.
So you're gonna go into court before? You just wanna go into court after on that meeting then?
That's what he's got.
Depends what.
Yeah.
It would zip everything. Close. But yes, there would be a potential to have to go into court.
First.
First.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just have room snacks.
Alright. Okay, public comment, clarification on new business, anything?
Anyone?
Nope.
Daniel?
I just wanna say, I really appreciate all the discussion that goes on up there now from people. It's all very nice. I enjoy that. I think most people appreciate that. It's much more open than what it has been in the past. Thank you all for that.
Thank you.
Alright, I think I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I saw move to adjourn.